Board members here tonight, our director of staff, members of the public as we look at the proposed 2023-2024 school budget review and discussion. Before we get started, obviously, this is somewhat somber meeting as we, first time we've been together since the unfortunate passing of Mr. Robinson and certainly will be missed on this board, by this board and certainly through the community as was evident during his visitation and funeral that happened earlier this week. This time I'd like to, for us just to pause and have a moment of silence in his honor. Thank you. So this is a meeting of the board and it's all meetings that we have policies and guidelines that are outlined on our website, available for the public. Have opportunity for public comment tonight. There has been, no one signed up for our meeting tonight, has to be recognized and so we will proceed with going into our discussion that will be presented by staff led by our director, Mr. Kirk Traumber, supported by Ms. Alley and Mr. Markham. And so we look forward to hearing that. Appreciate the work that they've done in trying to bring this all together for us to be able to review and discuss. This is going to be a little bit different as far as budget goes this year because this will be our first budget under the new state funding formula and so we know that they've been working hard to try to understand that and figure out how that, how we implement that into our school budget for this upcoming year. So appreciate the hard work and a lot of hours have been put into that. But before we get into that, we would like to take this time out on our agenda is disclosure of conflicts of interest. So if there are any disclosures of conflict of interest that may be noted, please make those disclosures known at this time.
Mr. Chairman, as I do each meeting, I will state that my wife is a teacher in the school system here in White County and the comments and the opinions that I state tonight during this budget meeting are truly mine and in the best interest of White County schools and the entire district.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald.
Mr. Chairman, I will state the same.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey.
Mr. Chairman likewise also. McDonald said it perfectly. I second what he did for my wife and myself.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. So what you meant is for fact that Mr. McDonald, Mr. Hickey and Mr. Howard noted that they do have spouses that work for the district but they will be expressing their individual opinions and views based on the well-being of our district. So thank you. I would say just on the housekeeping, again, this is, our meeting is being livestreamed through Warrior Media and we're, which is new the second time that we've done that. It would be helpful if everybody would just make sure that as when you speak and you address, make comments, encourage you to please use your microphone so that way that sound can project out through the livestream so anybody listening can hear full content of what's being discussed. So at this time, we'll move down to agenda number five and that is the fiscal year 2024 post-school budget review and discussion. Again, this is a review and discussion for us. We will not be taking any action on this. That will happen next week where we can have time to review what's being presented to us tonight. Mr. D has informed me that he will be available anytime between now and our next meeting to answer questions, provide clarification. I'm sure he'll be supported by Ms. Alley and Mr. Markham as well if that's required. So, but just let you as board members know that if you don't get your questions answered tonight or questions come up after we've concluded this meeting, that that will be available to you. And again, we will not be taking motions or taking any action on this budget. This is for review and discussion purposes only. So at this time, I'll turn that over to Mr. Traumber.
Thank you, Mr. Young. First, I want to say thank you to Chad Markham, Linda Alley for their hard work on preparing our budgets for tonight. You have the general purpose school budget in front of you tonight and you also have the central cafeteria budget or the school nutrition budget that we'll be taking a look at. I'll let them speak directly to the cafeteria budget, so I didn't have a whole lot of involvement in that. They worked with the supervisor, Tanya Savage, on that. But I'll be going through the general purpose school budget in its entirety. Before we get started, just some quick high notes on the budget. We did receive Intesa funds this year approximately 4.1 million more than what we received under the BEP. So our projections, revenues will be up, but if you look at the end budget result of our expenditures, there's still a deficit budget based on the increases that we've made, particularly to salaries for our staff, our faculty and staff. That is also coupled with the, well, several new positions that we've added as requested by our staff and our principals. And then also, we are taking on several salaries that, and expenditures that were previously under grants like ESER and the AARP grant, ARC grant. So with those salaries coming back and all the new additions that we've made, still running a what looks like a deficit budget, but this year in particular, we did the same and it looks like we're going to be able to contribute over a million dollars back into our savings account. So we, it's always been our fiscal stance to overestimate our expenditures and underestimate our revenues and that has paid dividends in the past. We've been able to contribute back to our savings account over the past several years and we hope to continue that again. So without, if you have any further, any questions at this point, I'll get, otherwise I'll get started and we'll start working our way through the general purchase, purpose school budget. That's Fund 141. So what I'd like to do is kind of go, not quite line by line. Some things will be redundant. You'll get to some points where I say supervisor's position and then there'll be a bunch of benefits and, what's the word I'm looking for? There'll be, list a bunch of benefits there too. We can skip over those lines, but I will talk about any of them and so stop me at any point if you have a question about any particular line. So starting on page one of your budget, that is going to start off really items, lines 4, 0, and 110 down through all the total statutory taxes down to 403, 20. Those are all the local taxes which they'll bring in $6,465, $4,665,622. That's about half, that figure's about halfway down the page. So that's all the money that we bring in from local taxes. You can see within that line there, there's the local option sales tax which has been up. The county property taxes have gone down. Chad, can you speak to that briefly about the change in the property tax?
Sure. So the county commission, the property tax penny brings in $54,956.94. There's 205 tax pennies within the county. That's where you get the 205 tax rate that you hear of. The county commission decreased the number of, or is proposing to decrease the number of pennies going to the school system to 63 pennies this year, which would bring down the current property tax rate. And that's being offset by increases in revenues from state revenue sharing, telecommunications, TBA, some additional funding through the will tax growth and then the local option sales tax. So overall, there's a $68,000 increase in maintenance of effort from the county to the school system, but it's just a reallocation of that revenue and that reduction of the tax penny to the schools.
Thank you. So rounding out page one, you have some marriage licenses, licenses and permits, some small amounts as far as revenues are concerned. So any revenues on page one, any questions?
Yes. So, Mr. Markham, just going through that, when you're stating that the county is going to decrease the amount of pennies, they're making up for it elsewhere. Are they decreasing property tax, the members of the county, or are they just using that for something else? How does that work?
No, as of, as of right now, the tax rate is still proposed at 205. Those tax pennies were just readjusted to the county general fund. Five tax pennies from the school system were reallocated to the county general fund.
Okay. Turning over to page two, still in revenues, we have tuition. This is line 43, 511. That's tuition. That's for out-of-county students. We bring in money for students that live outside of the county and have a hardship and continue to attend White County schools. We have a contract with TCAT, funds that we received from TCAT for their teachers, receipts back from individual schools. We have some miscellaneous lease agreements with the YMCA and the daycare here at our office and we receive funds from them. Moving towards the bottom of that page, we have $34,000 we received from White County High School in parking and gym seat fees. Also received $34,000 in, excuse me, that's also in gym seating and bus signs. We receive money from there. And the bottom of page two is some in-and-out funds, the contributions that come in and go right back out. And I always never understand that, but I'll, Mr. Markham will explain how those in-and-out funds, how that works. $200,000 at the bottom of page two.
That's other post-employment benefits. So that is an entry that we have to make at the end of the fiscal year to recognize the benefits that retirees receive through the state retirement system that's, that is allocated to White County. There's a corresponding expenditure that we'll get to later that's for $200,000. So it washes itself out as more of an accounting purpose than anything.
I have one question there. On the tuitions and the regular day students that we see, do we have a $10,000 worth of students that attend White County schools outside of our county lines?
Yeah, 9,200, basically.
Oh, wow.
Yes. And we have policy on that and our policy is that you, students, families must show hardship, meaning that a bus won't pick you up. So we just, we draw the line at the line and, but there are areas within our county that are right outside of our county that the other district won't run a bus to their house. So we consider that a hardship and we allow them to come to White County schools for that reason.
I mean, I know I had one contact, me, that lived just across of the Cav County line and it was nine miles to the closest bus stop and our bus was a half a mile from them. So.
Yeah, that's exactly why we've created that. So we try and respect the other districts and they want their students just like we do and so, but if a bus will come to your house, that's not a hardship. We appreciate that students want to come here, that families want to come here and we want all of them, but we try and respect our neighbors and stick to that and it's worked well. And our tuition fee is nominal compared to many others. We have a max of 2,000, 500 per student, a max of 2,000 per family. And I think some surrounding counties have $1,500 per student. So we're not trying to make money off of that. We came up with a formula based on some real numbers that we felt like the taxpayers were missing out on White County for, that's where that $500 came from and so we think that that's a fair price.
Mr. Traumber, I didn't hear what Ms. Alley said about the number of students.
She said that if you see on line 43, 511, we had about $9,250 that we received through tuition payments this year.
I have one question. On line item 44, 170, so miscellaneous refunds, it looks like we've gotten a refund from something each year, but there's nothing proposed as far as the budget receiving. Just wondering what that was.
Well, you have no, you never know what kind of refunds they're going to be getting and so it's not reasonable to budget something like that.
So it could be from, I mean, what is an example of getting a refund?
Well.
Hotel, it could be a hotel reimbursement or something with miscellaneous. Could it be an insurance? Yeah. Or not insurance claim, but.
Just various, a lot of areas.
Okay. Still in revenues, moving to page three. This is, up there at the top, 46, 510, that's the TISA funding. You can see that that's $28,632,059. As you scroll to the left, you can see the difference in that's, what that's been in corresponding years. That's the difference that we'll see this year above what we have seen in the BEP.
So our numbers were down in '22, '23 from, or no, the minute, so I'm looking at the estimated budget. So we had 23, 836 last year. We're getting 28, 632.
Correct.
059, okay.
Yeah. Yes, that's the amount coming from the state through the TISA funding model. 46, 515, just beneath that, early childhood education. This is the pre-K grant. So we have $509,185 and that's exactly the same amount we received last year. So we'll see how far that goes. It'll cover, the personnel may not cover all the materials, but we've got a plan to cover that. 46, 590 beneath that is other state educational funds. That's our safe schools money, $186,707. Just beneath that is career ladder, $31,000 for career ladder. You notice that number's going down. The career ladder program is being phased out, so as those teachers retire, there'll be less and less money being generated there for career ladder. Middle of the page, 46, 851, TBA revenue sharing, $232,353. So the total there in the middle of the page from the state is $29,791,304.
My numbers on my head, look. I got 29, 772,597.
Yes, I'm using an earlier copy, so the numbers that you're looking at are the correct numbers. I made my notes on the other copy that Ms. Alley and I worked with. So I'm kind of looking at one copy and reading, so if there's any numbers off the, the copy that you're looking at is correct. So yes, the, yes, the correct number is 29, 29,772,597.
So back up a little bit and said, I thought 186,000 on 46, 590?
Yeah, it's 168, correct. I'll read from this copy and look at my notes on this copy. I apologize.
That's fine.
We, Ms. Alley and I met and she made some adjustments after we met. So my notes are on one page and. Okay, so down near the bottom of page three, you have $70,000 in revenue from, that's from the ROTC. That's what we receive from the Army in reimbursement towards the salaries of those two staff members. And then if you turn over to page four, you have some federal projects, funds amounting And the total estimated revenues there in the middle of page four equal $36,485,689. That is the end of the revenue section. Any questions before we move on to expenditures? Okay. We will keep moving then. Starting on page five, our expenditures, the first line item, 71, 100. This is our teacher category. Teachers are in several different categories. We're just, the bulk of our teachers, actually I think 270, 217 and a half teachers are in this category. It's $13,034,730. We said that was for 271 and a half. 217 and a half. 217, yeah. And that includes, I think, three added positions in case we need to add a teacher throughout the year. That also includes, I think, the seven and seven and a half new positions that we added are in that number as well as three partial contracts that we bring back some people for about 40 hours, 40 days, excuse me, three people at 40 days apiece, developed with various programs. And this is raised, our, this new funding has raised our average teacher salary for about $57,500, average teacher. Okay, so beneath that, you have $20,000 in career ladder expenditures, or $15,000 for homebound teachers. Line item 77, 100, 163, this is educational assistance. This is for 41 educational assistants with two extra positions in there for growth. That's the amount of 800, look at this paper, 858,650. Then the sub-funds, 195 and 198, that's substitute teachers. We've increased substitute teacher pay to $100 for non-certified and 175 for certified teachers in hopes that we can get those teachers to come. Those amounts are 175,000 and 150,000 respectively.
So what is that increase? You said $100 for non-certified, 175 for certified. What were we paying?
70.
70 for non-certified and then 85. But if they got to above 20 days, then the certified teachers went to 160, yes. Oh, 160, yes. So we raised it to 175 and then we eliminated that 20-day clause in order to get people to take those. We've had so many leaves of absence. We've had folks medical, off of medical leave, maternity leave and anytime the teacher's out for 20 days, you have to have a certified teacher to take their place. So we heard from several folks that if we could raise the pay, that they would stay on or certified teachers would come back and help us. So that's what the reason for that raise.
I think that's a great raise. I mean, those, those folks, I've heard from several who, you know, were subs and said they could go to McDonald's and make more than what we were paying per day. And I agreed with them and that's, I think that's a great thing to be able to do, put that in our, in our budget this year to raise that, raise that price for those folks.
Okay, then you'll see several benefits beneath those, 201, 204, 205, 207, 210, 212. Those are all benefits for those employees and the corresponding amounts, the amount of $2,200,000. Ms. Alley, what is the 217, objects not in use on that line?
That's our hybrid. Yeah, that's just another TCRs code.
Okay, 429 instructional supplies, that remains the same. I think $350,000 for this category. Just beneath that, textbooks remains the same from last year, $450,000 budgeted for that. The other charges in 599, that's for our spring sports and the field maintenance at the, at our athletic fields, $118,000. And the last on this section, 722, regular instruction equipment. This is chromebooks and furniture, which we've upped that just for pricing, took it to $250,000 for this budget. Any questions on 7, 71, 100?
Looks like we didn't use a lot of monies in the chromebooks that you were in, the furnitures for last year.
Half the time, do it sign older, make off furniture on older.
So it happened. It's been ordered, it's just hasn't been paid for because of the lead times.
So, and there's, a lot of furnitures ordered at this time of the year, remaining funds. So they've just given us some orders from the schools and so some of that will take place with this year's budget.
And there is a possibility that would maybe agents paid or handed the furniture upon time, how this probably would be being sold, but that was going in. I think the estimate is around, but I think that's almost the time.
Yeah, you're going to have to speak really close into that because it's going to be really close to your mouth. Just pick it up and, yeah, thank you. I'm sorry. Will you repeat what you said about Bonducroft, please?
About the furniture? We are estimating as far along about $100,000 to furnish the new inducings and we're thinking maybe we might have like 2,000 or this kind of board of orders and furnish. With the purpose hang on, it may be better to have a 200,000, that's the reason we're purchasing them.
Okay. All right, so we're in special education. This is a section 7, 71, 200. Subsection 116, this is teachers. We're up from 25 to 30 teachers. Again, we were, we had to take back on several teachers that were being paid for with grants last year, that the grants ran out such as the ESER grant and AARP, ARC grant. So we had to take those teachers back, so that category is up. That amount is $1,720,000. Career ladder for those teachers, educational assistance in section, subsection 163. We added two assistants in that category, one for the behavior class at the middle school and one for Bonducroft due to needs. So that number is 293,100.
How many total right there?
16.
16, okay.
And then benefits beneath that takes us down to the special ed program total of Any questions about special ed?
Is that a state-funded position? I mean, is that state revenue we receive pretty much for that?
Well, it is, but they receive funding, they receive federal funding as well and then they have grant funding as well that goes to all, to fund those, there are several different positions. So there's IDEA funds that they receive from the federal government and there's state funds they receive for this part. And then they said, like I said, they've had grant funding as well to fund some of their positions. So their funding comes from several different sources.
And Mr. D, since that came up, and one of the things we didn't say on the introduction here is that, you know, we're, what budget we're looking at now is state and local revenues. And so we also have a federal component that doesn't come around until as we get into the fall period, I think September-ish timeframe, September, October, that we come back and look at too. So some of the things you're seeing here, there will be other revenues that will come into. So some of the things you're seeing here, there will be other revenues that will come into support some of these programs that may not be reflected here. Am I correct in, in the?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, yeah.
So just for a point of clarity for...
So one other thing I was just wondering, we, if my math is right, we have two-hundred-and-forty-seven and a half teachers that we fund. And then he says there was three positions in our teachers category that is there if we need to add. So we'll be at two-hundred-and-fifty and a half certified teachers?
There's actually more than that. There's probably over three-hundred.
We'll have about three-fifteen, three-sixteen overall.
Okay, that's just, I'm just doing it from right here, what we've talked about at this point.
Yes, there are different categories. As you'll see as we go through, there'll be different folks because they could get paid for them out of different pots of money. So, but total teachers, we have over three-hundred. Like I said, I think the number's like three-oh-five this year, three-oh-six, but we've added seven or eight positions this coming year. So it'll be closer to three-fifteen. Okay, seventy-one, three-hundred Vocational Education Program. I'm on the bottom of page five. Six-hundred thousand dollars for teachers in that category. We're on page six.
How many teachers was left?
Have some substitute teacher funds there and then some, some benefits. Takes us down, there's instructional supplies there on line four-twenty-nine. And it takes us down to a final, that category of eight-hundred-two-thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety. Is that correct? Yes. That's vocational education program. And that's a good example of what the chairman was talking about. So much of that money comes through Perkins Grants, through other various forms, the Innovative School Models Grant, lots of different money. Perkins Reserve, lots of different funds will come into vocational. This is just one part of the funding that will come to that department.
And that's reflected when you see me presented with a deficit budget. It's hard to, you know, we don't have all the information for that to balance out. I do think historically, if you look at how district has handled having funds and expenditures throughout the year, they certainly demonstrated their ability to work with budgets and stay, you know, under budget what's, what's being proposed. And so that's a, that's a compliment to them on that effort. The other thing too, I guess, that even if, if we had those funds, we're in vocational education, instructional equipment. Of course, we go back to Innovative Schools Grant that carried a big portion of those, those expenditures there that we're not able to cover out of budget. So that was, I think we're very fortunate that we had that, that money to be able to appropriate vocational education.
Okay. Your batteries. Any question was, how many teachers for vocational education? Think that number was seven, eleven?
Do we have any aides or assistants going into that category?
No.
No aides or assistants.
Is this the same thing called CTE program? Or is that coming out of a different?
Yes, that is. Yes, that is a CTE program. Formerly called vocational, yes.
Just wants to get, once it gets set up in the system, it's vocational, Ms. Alley. To begin a statement, right?
Yeah.
Regardless of what they want to call in the future, it's, yeah.
So the middle of that page, this is section seventy-two, zero-zero-zero. Subsection one-oh-five, this is attendance supervisor. Salary on line one-oh-five. That's a salary again we picked up from Esser that was paid out of Esser grant funds last year. So again, another example of how this GP budget or general purpose budget is going to have to pick up some of that slack. We anticipated that, knowing that we paid for some things, a lot of things with Esser funds and some other grant funds, knowing that TISA funds were going to provide more money down the road, we'd have to pick those up. So beneath that, one at line one-oh-five, you see the benefits and travel for a total of attendance of one-hundred-and-fourteen thousand, seven-hundred-and-forty dollars for that category. Mr. Haley, yes. And also I want to make note that these numbers reflect our new salary schedules that we have. So you have that in your packet. We provided for you tonight a list of the staff and faculty salary schedules proposed. So if that's the board, if the board looks at these and approves this budget, then that's what you'd be approving is these new salary schedules, which we have rolled out. We've extended the years of service so that those increases will continue longer. We will get raises more years. We've used a bulk of our TISA funding to increase salaries. And we've increased entirely new salary scales so that there's growth involved for our staff members. Where before, without just a raise, you know, given by the, by the school board each year, they wouldn't know year to year where they were going on, on that scale. So a lot of work's been done. I thank Ms. Alley for her hard work on that, putting all that together. And so that's what, a lot of these numbers are reflecting that. So you're going to see raises from one year to the next in some of these categories based on the level of the years of service and on their level of degree of work experience. So you'll see some, some changes in some of these numbers from year to year. We feel, we feel good about the raises that we're being able to offer our staff members and faculty.
So just as a point of clarity, when we, on the scheduling, I don't know, you may, you may be looking at that board members since we brought it up, but administrative experience, that is, would that include, say, we had an educator that would come from one district to our district? Are we recognizing that on this pay scale? For example, if someone from, say, DeKalb County with five years' experience came in for high school principal, would they, would we pick them up with that, at that level? Or would they be going back and starting at our base level of pay based on how the scale's set up?
On the salary scale, it would be again, regardless of our system. We would not count the administrative for years in that system.
Okay, so for just clarity, that this, this scale is based on years of service in our district? Not, not recognizing service in other districts?
And the principals, vice principals, supervisors, it's based on their experience in that category. Not as a teacher, if they've been a teacher five years, but only in that, that category.
Okay, so again, just a form of clarification for us all because this, this can be, it may come up, but if somebody was, was five years in as an educator and then they wish to choose to move into a principal position, then it would be, it would not, it would not count, they would not come in counting their, their five years in the system. They'll be counting their five years at that position.
That's correct.
Okay. Any questions on that? Okay, thank you, Sally.
All right, so that takes us to the bottom of page six, health services. This is seventy-two, one-twenty, subphone one-oh-five. Supervisor director's salary, fifty-five thousand, five-ten. Beneath that, you have one-eighty-nine other salaries and wages. This is two-forty-five, two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars. That is for four nurses that are in work.
Eight.
Oh, excuse me, eight. That we picked up, that were being paid for out of Esser funds or ELC.
Four were picked up at ELC.
Four ELC and four Esser. Just four ELC, okay. So what we mean is four then were being paid with grant funds and now we're having to take them back to the budget because they're granted. Beneath that, see more benefits, there's some travel funds and supply money. That's on page six. And then right on top of page seven, you get a total amount for that category versus is three-hundred-and-nine and a half, eight-hundred-and-thirty dollars.
Just really, would you, if there's an individual that is a supervisor or a supervisor, would you think that's a good way to put it? That's why I see you can operate. I'm just trying to, you know, be associated with those positions.
Okay, page seven. Seventy-two, one-thirty, other students support. There's several other categories here, one-seventy in career ladder program, one-twenty-three guidance personnel. That's for guidance staff, we added one new one this year at the middle school. Beneath that, other personnel, one-sixty-two, that's Mickey Steele at the high school. One-eighty-nine salaries and wages, that's structured bumble, that's your specials. Then we have several lines to the benefits. Go down to line three-ten, contract, that's a vacation, ten thousand dollars for model. Three-twenty-two evaluation, I think, which one is that? It's three-twenty-two. What is that to? ACT, our parents are ACT.
No, I have a question on the model. That, we're playing, we used that facility for us two years ago for our hospital, our schedule.
Well, yeah, that's still there. Thank you, thank you, definitely, that's nice. We have part of the U D partnership, so thank you for that. Yes, that's the first, that's the negative four, the person that we pay our, that's four percent. Because our students eat, they're next to it when they all turn their professional form. So three-nine-nine other contracted services, thirty-seven dollars is to start physical therapy, that's for Ryan, that's for Ryan's salary. Four-thirty-one, options unused, that's two-fifty thousand for software, various software, five hundred and twenty-five. And then four-thirty-nine, other materials and supplies for our students. So a total of one-million, two-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars for other students. Okay, next section, seventy-two, two-ten, regular instruction program. Subsection one-oh-five, supervisor director, amount of eight-eight thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars. That is for our curriculum supervisor, Miss Fresh and Miss Doctor Fisher. Seven-seven, one-twenty-nine librarians, three-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand dollars. That's something six librarians. Stuff on one-sixty-two, current personnel. That's half, that's a communal salary. Special education, four. One-sixty-three instructional assistants, that's for Gray and Miss Hill. One-eighty-nine other salary and wages, three-three thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars. That's a K nine drive. And there's several subfunds for benefits. Twenty thousand dollars raised for travel in the regular instruction category. Now, page three-nine-nine, that's for K nine service to use in the middle school. Four, thirty-two, library door to media room, that's unchanged from last year, thirty thousand dollars. And then top of page eight, insurance and staff development, which is down to our staff. For a total of eight-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand, three-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars in regular instruction. Okay, seventy-two, two-thirty, special education, seven, five, supervisor director, Dr. Thompson, eight-three thousand, five-hundred-and-forty dollars. One-twenty-four, psychology, psychologists, or two school psychologists in two different sides. We had that personally, about three hundred and seventy-five dollars for those two positions. Um, you can go down to one-sixty-two, that's about the time, the salary. Beneath that, or maybe that's the salary on one-eighty-nine. Salary, that's two benefits. Travel, go down to line, three-nine-nine, other contracted services, that's for three thousand dollars for our operations. They're using their services to contract that. And then this is the chairman's philosophy, special education, for three-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand dollars. Page four, seventy-two, two-thirty, location change, page eight. Uh, so one-five, supervisor director's salary, that's like one-sixty-two thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Uh, one-sixty-eight, one-sixty-one secretaries, fifty-eight thousand, three-five dollars, that's two secretaries in that. Benefits and travel. Down to weather, services, that's about that, I'm wondering, yeah, yeah.
Our purchases and our experiences, we can get more bang for our buck because by doing it that way.
Exactly, so this money is being budgeted in anticipation that we would get these grant funds to, to do even more.
Obviously, if we didn't, weren't awarded the grants, then that would be monies that would, would, well, I guess in that case, what you mentioned, we may be spending anyway, it's just, uh, we wouldn't be able to expend as much without the grants.
Correct, or it could be made just, it, it could be allocated other places with, with a budget amendment, or it could be referred back to the fund balance at the end of the year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the total on, uh, technology category is seven hundred seventy-nine thousand five hundred ninety dollars. That takes us to, uh, I think this is that, since that other in and out portion, that two hundred thousand that Mr. Markham spoke of earlier, this is the expenditure portion of that transaction. And then moving down to seventy-two, three-ten, Board of Education, uh, one ninety-one. Uh, that's the board payments made to Board of Education members for your service, totaling sixteen thousand nine hundred eighty-five dollars. Uh, in-service training for the board on line one ninety-six. Benefits paid on those salaries. Uh, line two thirteen is, uh, payments to retirees, uh, this is the fifteen hundred dollar, uh, payment that retirees get if they retire from our system after thirty years, they get that one-time payment. Other French benefits, uh, twenty-five thousand, this is for sick leave. Contributions is three nineteen. Yes, uh, that's forty-seven thousand six hundred forty dollars, that's half of the HR position for Jennifer Ren- excuse me, Jennifer Rigsby.
So, on the, uh, the two thirteen, three six, I mean, those, those just haven't been paid yet, is that why they're zero? Is that after we're in the end of the year?
What did you say, Jennifer Rigsby, what, what line up?
Uh, that is, uh, three sixteen. That's half, uh, we should, we split that cost with the, uh, that's half of her package, uh, and we split that with the county government. Uh, dues and memberships and legal services beneath that. Liability insurance, uh, that estimated to go up just about every year, so, uh, then we've estimated a twelve percent increase and we can say that she has on that, and that's line item five of six.
Those, uh, those dues and memberships, that's our TSBA memberships for all board members, uh, Michelle, uh, Miss Allen has a support secretary, and I guess.
I don't know if she has that classification right now, but it's for all the board members.
Okay.
On the top of page ten, uh, trustees commission and workman's comp insurance. Uh, those two with a hundred fifty thousand, two hundred four thousand respectively. Total for, the total for the school board category is, uh, six hundred sixty-three thousand one hundred seventy-five dollars.
So, Mr. V, uh, going back in, I think for, just for clarity, when we look at personnel in this budget, we're having a budget for everything, we're budgeting salary, uh, but we're also, uh, budgeting an employee match for, uh, for payroll, for, uh, so security, federal, uh, and Medicare expenses, things that employees are, are required to match, uh, on that. But then we're also including in that, uh, various support of their ser- uh, 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 for example, maybe instructional materials, whatever it costs for, for their role in our district. So if we're going in and say, for example, uh, we're partnering with, uh, the county for a position, then that number that's reflected in this budget, that's inclusive of everything that it costs for to have that position and any expenses, payroll expenses associated with that, maybe some support for office supplies, computers and things like that. So, just looking at it, that's, when we're sharing those costs, it's total cost, it's not just a salary, uh, it's, it's total cost for having that, that position, is that correct? Okay, so, just, uh, so, in that, in that position, she is not technically our employee, we're just contributing to, uh, for the services, like we're paying a contractor, and that would be all the costs that were associated for that position. Thank you.
Somebody educate me on the trustees commission, I don't, what is that?
So, by state law, the trustee is allowed, the trustee's office is allowed to take a commission off of, uh, revenues that come into all funds, except for federal funds, uh, which will be one forty-two to one forty-three to all trustees commission. It's just a way, uh, that funds that the trustee handles, because the trustee is essentially the banker for the county. The trustee's funds, that's just a way that the trustee's office can be funded, uh, for those services. So every fund pays into the trustee's commission, even the general fund pays the trustee's commission to itself, to, uh, the operation of the trustee's office. And that, that goes to the county, uh, general fund.
Thank you.
I missed the name.
Yes.
On workers, um, every, so, I actually prepare a report along on the estimation of our fire hospital basic dollar a year. This year, because we just moved into the dividend or salary scale, and if they get that recording in early, this gives you a base in lower or a base in less, I'd be tempted to be aware of that, and that's something to pay that back.
So, work, workman's comp premiums are based on total payroll, and so, and you estimate that, so if you estimate at the beginning of the year, you're gonna have three hundred employees, you end the year, you're, at the end of the year, maybe three fifteen, three twenty, then they'll come back, audit that payroll, and then they'll make the adjustments. If you come back and you're at two ninety, then that's where you could receive a refund for, uh, that's where a refund might come into play. Um, example there, so, so yeah, it very much workman's comp is estimate on, on what's expected, but they will come back and audit that at the end of the year based on, because the premiums are on, based on actual payroll numbers.
All right, um, middle of page ten, uh, fund seven-two, seven-two-three, seven-two-three-twenty, excuse me, Director of Schools. Uh, line item one oh one, that is my salary, one oh six, no, excuse me, one oh three, seven oh five, that's a two percent raise, which is what is in my contract. Um, beneath that are benefits. Uh, line three oh seven, communication is for several folks that have cell phones under that category, not just mine. Um, dues and memberships, three twenty, uh, the total on that, and then some travel, the total on that category is, uh, one sixty-two oh ninety-nine.
I was gonna say, if your cell phone is nine thousand dollars, we're gonna have, we're gonna have to have some, some calls.
No, my cell phone is crazy cheap, it makes me wonder why Verizon doesn't do that for everybody, uh, but we have, uh, numerous people that are under that category that have business calls. Any questions? Okay, seven-two-four-ten, Office of the Principal, uh, line one oh four, uh, this is eight principals, six hundred twenty-two thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, skipping down a couple lines, one nineteen, Accounts and Bookkeepers, uh, eighty-nine thousand three hundred. Just beneath that, thirty, one thirty-nine, Assistant Principals, there are seven, that's, uh, five hundred thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. One sixty-one, Secretaries, uh, of which there are eight, two hundred and seventy-two thousand one hundred and sixty-four dollars. Benefits and Retirement, um, what, three oh seven, Communication, uh, that's sixty thousand dollars, that's for the school phone, phone bills. And the total in that category is, uh, one million nine hundred seventy-four thousand three hundred fourteen dollars.
Mr. Drumberger, uh, it said we have eight principals and seven assistant principals, so what school doesn't have an assistant?
Well, we, many of them. Uh, the middle school and high school, and Wyden Park are the only ones that had assistant principals up to now, and then Finley, next year, we're gonna have an interim principal, assistant principal position, but the other elementary schools do not.
Just the principals.
Correct.
And there are two assistant principals at the middle school?
Two at the middle school, three and a half at the high school, and a CTE director.
Ah, thirty at the high school, where's the half?
Well, she's, Ms. Hawkins is part-time, she teaches part-time and as an administrator, part-time. So there are three, and then she's teaches and is administrator, and then Mr. Ward is the CTE director.
Well, I just have three, I didn't, I, I mean, Ms. Hawkins is in with the three, three full-time, that's principals.
So we have Scott Wilson, Nathan Aaron.
And Ms. Hawkins.
Ms. Hawkins. Okay, those are your three?
Yes.
Okay.
Wilson, Hawkins, and who?
Wilson, Hawkins.
And Aaron.
And Aaron, yes, yeah, you're right, that's right. And then.
And then Mr. Ward.
Mr. Ward is CTE director, yes, and then Scott, and then Greg Wilson is the principal. Okay, um, top of page eleven, Fiscal Services, uh, this is section seven, seven-two-five-ten. Subphone one oh five, Supervisor Director, this is Ms. Alley, salary seventy-two, seven thirty. Is that, that's not correct though, is it?
Uh, you said we was gonna adjust that.
Yeah, we're gonna adjust that, so. It'll be, it'll be a lower amount than that.
I think we capped, we capped those off as far as the salary scale at sixteen years.
She's, yeah, at sixteen years, so you'll have that number in your packet, if you look at that salary scale, under her category, it's sixteen years. Um, and I think that number is closer to sixty-six.
And that's in the, this one?
It's the support staff, yes, I think that number's closer to sixty-six or sixty-seven. Um, Vanessa.
So, just for clarity, because that, no, that is, uh, that would be on the support staff, and we would be looking on that.
Right there, it's on.
So she's in grade two, you're in grade two, correct, you're in, on the grade two side of it?
I think she's got her own category, it's on the second page, it's the far right column.
Right, if you look at, uh, if you look at, uh, the salary scale, and we certainly wanna make sure that this is clarified before we bring this, uh, up for, for final.
First sheet.
First sheet or second sheet?
Oh, yes, it's the first sheet, under the cover sheet, last column on the right.
So.
So it's broken down by hours.
Yes, yeah, you multiply that by twenty-eighty, for the hours.
Put, put that, do the same thing over here?
We had ran that out, uh, for twenty years, but, uh, to daddy, we changed it, kept it at sixteen.
So, so that's capped at, uh, see that at the last column on these, on the, the second page in your packet. Uh, sixteen years of, uh, thirty-two eighty-four an hour, so, just. My calculator's math's correct, that, uh, seventy-two, seven thirty number would actually be, uh.
But we capped it at sixteen, so, is that right?
Yes, the budget's already prepared, but today, I understood.
We made some changes today, so.
Okay.
I'm, I'll have to go back.
So there will be a cap on that, and I'm sure we get that, that will be reflected in the.
Yes.
The budget that we sit next to.
Yes.
So.
Okay, um, so line one sixty-one is Secretaries, uh, that is for Kim Sims, so thirty-nine thousand eight sixty. Uh, one sixty-two is, uh, Leslie McCurry, that's thirty-nine thousand eight sixty. Then we have Retirement and Benefits. Uh, what is the three sixteen, Contributions, Ms. Alley?
That's thirteen thousand, that, for years, we have give to, um, Chad's office. Um, it started out when we started out giving, when our bookkeeper moved, our payroll court moved to the, um, uh, courthouse, so that's been going back and forth ever since that time.
And so that just assists your office to help us do our work, I mean, just.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, sorry, it just, it's a revenue in the general fund.
Okay, similar to the trustees.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have some travel funds in there, and then some administrative equipment, computers, office furniture, uh, to round out that category, two hundred and twenty-three thousand four hundred and five dollars. Seventy-two, six-ten, Operation of Plant, Custodial Personnel, uh, that is the first line, one sixty-six, that is thirty-five custodial positions, one million four hundred and eight thousand nine hundred ninety-six dollars. One eighty-nine, Other Salaries and Wages, that is forty-one thousand five hundred, that is Roger Thorpe's salary, Custodial Manager. Uh, Retirement Benefits and Health Benefits. Um, going down to four fifteen, Electricity, uh, that is, remains the same budgeted from last year. Natural Gas is down a little bit budgeted from last year. Water and Sewers remains the same. Other Materials and Supplies, we increased just the cost of, about ten thousand dollars, cost of toilet paper, everything is up. Um, Boiler Insurance remains the same, and Building and Content Insurance has gone up as well, two hundred nine thousand dollars, so the total in that category, three million, three twenty-three, six sixty-eight.
Quick question, have we seen a, a noticeable, um, decrease in use of electricity with our LED lights?
I, I think we did see that, Mr. Mr. Alley did some, we did that, you know, we've done that a few years ago. So, Mr. Alley said we did see a cre- decrease, you know, within individual schools. I don't know if it's appreciable, uh, like we'd hope. Um, they still, we still have people in the building, slot of the days, and, um, you know, there's, there's certainly more we can do there to save, but it certainly saves, uh, but to say that it's, you know, been really noticeable to where it's showing up in other parts of the budget, I don't, I don't know that I could say that. Um, but you can see that, you know, we're not having the increases, so, um, so I guess I suppose that's good. It, it does help, it certainly does help, but we did that on our own, a lot of districts go through other companies and have people come in and, and do those sorts of things, that our maintenance folks did that in our, on our own, in our, in our schools. All right, Maintenance of Plant, uh, this is seventy-two, six-twenty, I'm on the bottom of page eleven. Um, subphone one sixty-seven, Maintenance Personnel, uh, we have, of which we have five, two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, excuse me, yeah, two hundred and sixty-one thousand one hundred dollars. Uh, Benefits and Retirement. Bottom of that page, three forty-seven, we've gone up in Pest Control. Turn it over to page twelve. Uh, four ninety-nine, we have Other Supplies and Materials, this is, uh, General Maintenance Supplies, wood, nails, screws, whatever they need. Uh, we've increased that, because the cost of everything has gone up, that's a hundred and eighty thousand. Um, min- Administration Equipment, uh, seven oh one, the amount of one oh one. One oh one six. Oh, ninety-five thousand, sorry, I was looking at my little page, ninety-five thousand, thank you. Uh, what is that, Ms. Alley?
And Safe School Funds, um, if we did.
Right, that Safe Schools Fund, if we, if we get that money from the state, we never, never know exactly what that money's gonna be till the fall. We anticipate getting that much money, and that's what we'll use to do security, it's the first money we'll use for security enhancements, uh, at the schools, locks, you know, windows, cameras, all those things. Uh, seven seventeen, into that category is Maintenance Equipment, uh, predominantly HVAC Systems. Uh, we set at least fifty thousand aside each year, just to do the oldest ones that we have, and we usually wait till this time of year to see what's left over in that category and, and address those. So the total amount in that category is seven eighty-five, eight fifteen. Transportation, seventy-two, seven-ten, uh, subphone one oh five, line one oh five, uh, seventy-nine thousand nine hundred fifteen dollars, that's Randy Alley's salary. One forty-two, Two Bus Mechanics, one oh eight, three eighty-nine. Uh, one forty-six is our Bus Drivers, uh, eight hundred and thirty thousand, that's thirty-five drivers, and we have some drivers that are paid out of special ed funds as well. Uh, one sixty-two is Clerical Personnel, that's Lori Summers. Uh, one eighty-nine, Other Salaries and Wages, uh, this is for our Special Education Aides, I think, maybe a couple of positions.
And Bus Trips?
Bus Trips, yeah, thank you, that's out of that ninety-two thousand dollars. Uh, Sal- Benefits and Retirement. Communication at three oh seven is for Phones in that, in that department. Other Benefits Dental, uh, four twelve, Diesel Fuel, uh, that's obviously up, two, it's up ten thousand dollars to two hundred and ten thousand. Four twenty-four is Garage Supplies, four twenty-five, Gasoline, obviously, that's, we've raised that as well. Four thirty-three, Lubricants, is, uh, stayed, remained the same, four fifty, Tires and Tubes, uh, that is up, cost of those is, is increased. Uh, four fifty-three, Vehicle Parts, we've increased that, uh, it's thirty thousand dollars, um, up to one hundred and thirty thousand. Uh, Insurance, uh, let's go down here to the Other Charges in five ninety-nine. That's Bus Inspections, and sometimes we pour rocks in people's yards, we can turn our buses around, and that's where that money comes from. Um, we ask them first, and then they give us permission, and then we turn their, our big bus around where they are. Uh, seven twenty-nine, Transportation Equipment, that's for two buses, two regular buses and one Special Education Bus this year. Also, we have a Bookmobile, uh, in that, we've talked about that as a board, the board talked about that, and one Maintenance Vehicle. All that is, uh, four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in that particular category. If we get all those vehicles, and the total in transportation budget is two million, three hundred forty-two thousand six hundred ninety-nine dollars.
Well, the buses are cheap, aren't they?
No, the buses that we bought maybe four years ago, that were ninety, mid-nineties, are now probably a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Same bus.
Mr. Drumberger, you had two regular buses, one special ed bus, one bookmobile, what was the other?
A Maintenance, Maintenance Truck, or the Maintenance Department.
That first line item, Randy Alley, is he getting a twelve thousand dollar rate, am I looking at that right, or is there more to get on him, on there?
It's.
No, that's where he falls on the.
Yeah, that's where he falls on that salary scale. So, you know, it's just some of our folks that have been in the system for a long time, that, you know, they fall on a scale, maybe they've been underpaid and for a certain amount of time, and now they're, they're, we're finally catching up. Some people were already there, you know, Mr. Ward, well, you brought that one up, that was one where we made an adjustment, and Mr. Ward went from Wyden Park to, um, the high school, we made an adjustment so that he didn't go backwards at that time, so we made, felt like he had got that bump at that time, but at this time, where he falls on that scale, it's, it's not gonna be a nominal effect, but he's just where he falls on that scale, so, we've tried to just be honored where everybody falls on the scale according to their degree and their level of experience.
Gasoline, how many vehicles we have that are on gasoline?
All our sped buses.
All the sped buses, uh, mo- every one of our, uh, vehicle, our cars and vans and trucks are, uh, only the buses, only the majority of the bus fleet is on diesel.
So how many vehicles do you have that are on gasoline?
I don't have that number right off the top of my head, but we can certainly do that.
Okay, Food Service, um.
One more on that.
Oh, sure.
Seven twenty-nine, uh, for the Equipment, do we have, uh, a bus that's doing older, probably going to get, with human bundles that are kind of hard to pull by?
We have one that has a kind of revenue out of, it's, nothing, but it has a, has a, it's a, it's a low, it's, it's, it's low.
Yes, we, we've already been in contact with them and put in orders without, even before the funds have been approved, because, you know, the, the supply chain issues, so, um, you know, we, we've already placed orders, uh, pending funding, and so, yeah. Though I said we're still waiting on one, that would pay for all of this year's money. Okay, um, seventy-three, one hundred is Food Service, we have that, that separate budget coming up shortly, we'll go over that. So if we turn to page thirteen, third of the way down, uh, Community Services, this is seventy-three, three hundred. Uh, one eighty-nine, Other Salaries and Wages, this is Beverly Drumberger, uh, sixty thousand forty-six dollars. I can speak to that, that's a, that's a big raise for Mr. Drumberger, and in full disclosure, when she came on board, um, I made her, I didn't make her, I asked her to not take her full experience, because I knew the way that that would look in hiring my life. Uh, but, so what we did at this point is we've, as we've gone through all employees and just let them fall on their scale where they fell, uh, that's where she falls on the professional exempt, uh, employee scale, and so, I feel like she's been underpaid, she brought in the amount of raise, she brought in that much more in, uh, grant money last year, so, uh, not worried about my raise, but I think she needs to get what she's deserved, and so, wanna make that full disclosure there, because she falls just like everybody else falls, and that we're treating her just like all the other employees on those scales.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
There was one, if I remember correctly, it was a year that half her salary was paid one way, half of her was paid the other way right there, is that, other half gone?
No, you're, you're correct, what, that was, uh, FRC funds that were given by the state that came through a specific line item in the BEP, but now they just tell us it's in the base, so they say that the funding for FRC is just in the base somewhere. They don't break it out and tell you anymore, it used to be like twenty-nine thousand dollars, I think was that amount, that they allocate in, in F, uh, according to school health is the same way, I think there was one other program as well, they don't do any like that anymore. They just say it's in the base at sixty-eight, sixty, or the amount that every student generates. So that twenty-nine thousand, they say, the state says, is still in there, but they don't put it out in a specific line item anymore, uh, like they did.
I guess what I'm getting, so that's her total salary?
Yes. Um, Insurance and Retirement Benefits, um, Travel and Supply, Other Charges, uh, there's eleven thousand dollars there, uh, in Grant Funds. And the total in that category is eight hundred and, eight, excuse me, eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five. Uh, seventy-three, four hundred, Early Childhood Education, um, line one sixteen, Teachers, this is, uh, three hundred thirty-five thousand five hundred dollars for five teachers, this is our pre-K program. Educational Assistance on line one sixty-three, a hundred and five thousand two hundred dollars for five assistants in those classes. Uh, Insurance Benefits, Retirement, some Instructional Supplies, and some Instructional Equipment, rounding out that category at five hundred sixty-four thousand one hundred ninety-one dollars for early childhood. Capital Outlay, and, uh, I have, Ms. Alley will help me with several of the projects that we have scheduled for this year. I've given you a copy of the Capital Outlay, the most current Capital Outlay Plan, and I can speak to the ones that we've already checked off, and then those that are coming up, and Ms. Alley has several small projects and some larger ones as well. Um, so looking at Capital Outlay, I'm on the bottom of page thirteen, this is, uh, section seventy-six, one hundred. Line three oh four, Architects, we have architectural fees in there. one hundred, line three oh four, architects, we have architectural fees in there, except for Doyle, that'd be later in the year if we, when we wanna look at Doyle Elementary. Three twenty-one, engineering services, for that and other projects that we'll, we have budgeted funds for the engineers to do their studies on our various projects. And then building improvements, there is a seven hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars, and Miss Alley, I'll let you read off a few of the, a list of the things that we plan on doing this coming year.
Okay, we have a cell park in line at the high school, that's a thirty-nine thousand. The middle school parking lot is on the cell path, the thirty thousand. The softball, film in or whatever.
Hitting facility.
Yeah, yeah, three hundred thousand. With the parks restaurants, the renovated nodes, the new stalls, seven thousand. The bleachers at Bonde Croft, Jim, a hundred thousand. Career Academy, hanging over there, nine, ten thousand. Young Colored Foundation, seven thousand. And Johnson and Leighton, it's for, in Texas, and fees, forty thousand. And fifty thousand for, our bills, I'm having to build that, every, every year, here I have.
So several of the projects that we're currently working on or have already been completed in your document, Bondicraw Elementary Edition, of course, is ongoing right now, the Bondicraw window replacement has already taken place in the new windows in the old portion of the building, White County High School HVAC improvements have been done, the gymnasium, gymnasium air conditioning projects at all the schools that did not have gym, air have been done except for Bondicraw, that, that one will be done as part of the building addition. The middle school roof has been replaced, the Northfield roof has been replaced, Doyle Elementary restrooms have been upgraded, the Board of Education roof that you smell has been replaced, White County High School gymnasium bleachers, they're in the process, I think, that happened in the summer or fall break? So that, that's been a process, but those have already been paid for and, and are in, in the process. As Miss Alley mentioned, this year, the softball hitting facility is supposed to be built in twenty-twenty-three, was proposed in twenty-three and will be built by twenty-four. So moving into next, this coming fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-four, the gymnasium bleachers at Bondicraw and then we will look at Cassville and Woodland Parks and get an assessment on theirs, Woodland Park restrooms, as she mentioned, will come up this year. We have baseball field upgrades scheduled on that list, but I don't think we've addressed that right now, but that will be for the spring, we'll take a look at that. And then still remaining on our, kind of our top ten list, moving into fiscal year twenty-five will be Doyle Elementary School Edition, White County High School track improvements and the, a shed at the department, Transportation Department. Excuse me, now we also have, moving into twenty-six and twenty-seven, we have CTE area handlers and a high school, an addition at the high school. So we have completed many of the projects that are on our list, I'd say the first of the eleven, I think we're done with, looks like six we've addressed already and, and that covers everything in fiscal year twenty-four, so.
Looking ahead at the track improvements, what, what does that entail? I know we've had, we've had some interest in different things there.
So what we'd like to do is put a synthetic surface on the track and make it a six-lane track that they can actually practice on, they could actually hold a, a district meet, they couldn't hold a, a regional meet because it doesn't have, it wouldn't be big enough for eight lanes. To get eight lanes there, you'd have to move the bleachers, grandstands and the cost would be astronomical, but our hope is to take existing, what is now kind of a service road around, around the football field and put a synthetic surface on it. And so I've, I've had initial, someone come over and gave me a quote, but it's been a few years now, but that's the plan is to eventually put a synthetic surface on that they can at least practice on, if not have some, some small meets.
So, a, and the gentleman that called me about this was, was talking about that our students have to go to Cookville for their meets, so if you're gonna have a home meet for White County High School, it has to take place at Cookville High School, correct?
At another school, another, another venue.
Okay, and I know we've had several of our student athletes that have competed and, and went great, I mean, great lengths, I think we had two or three teams go to the state tournament this year.
We had a couple individuals qualify.
Okay, so, I mean, it looks like the, the involvement has increased there, so I, I would make sure, I wanna make sure that we do all we can to keep those, those folks in a facility that would be good enough for them to compete on and, and host a, you know, a district meet or any kind of meet that they would wanna have here in White County.
So that means their home games could be done here, or meets?
Well, from what I understand, I'm not a track coach, but from what I understand, part of the problem was not having eight lanes, you have to have eight lanes on track to have a full, at least a, a regional meet, but I think they could have, from what I understand, they could have some smaller meets, maybe just with a couple of schools and it's certainly good to practice. It would enhance the look of the facility tremendously as well, but, but it, to move, to get eight lanes, again, we'd have to move those bleachers and it would be incredibly expensive, I'm not, you know, I'm not sure that, that that's where we wanna go with that, but we could, we could look at it and get, see what it would cost, but the plan is to do six lanes.
But there possibly could be, their home ones done there, if it's small enough meets?
That's the hope, yes.
I think.
We would, we would, I'm sorry, we would definitely confirm that before we started, you know, putting down a surface, we would confirm that, that that's gonna be beneficial, that they would be able to have wholesome meets there, yes.
And I, I think what, kinda what you're alluding to, Miss Stone, is, and not knowing a lot about that, but a lot of times you'll have, for instance, you'll have like stu-, like somewhere like York, Livingston, White County, Cookville, it might be a quad meet, so you're gonna have to have more room for more runners, and I, I think that's what you're alluding to, and a lot of times they, they might have five or six different schools at one meet, so that, I understand that, and I guess we could look at the, the possibility of having a smaller meet here, so, yeah, I mean, it's something to look forward to in the future.
So also on the future projects, a lot of other people are doing like turf fields, is that something that we would want to look at, or is that something you would leave up to the individual sports team themselves?
Well, I think, you know, we had representatives from the football team here last meeting, or meeting before, and that's part of their extended plan down the road, you know, after they do the Jumbotron and some other things, they had a plan to look at that. You know, it's not on our, my plan right now, you know, there's, it's not just fix it and forget it, it's, there's still a lot of upkeep to those fields and then every ten years about, you gotta replace it, and so, you know, there's sort of ongoing costs considered, not against that idea, but it is very expensive and, you know, there's a lot of reports about injuries and, you know, more injuries on those type of fields than on natural grass and that sort of thing, so there's, there's pros and cons, I'm, I'm not against it, but it is a big expense, it'd be, that's something that the board would have to really be behind and, but, you know, but like I said, the high school booster club, football booster club, quarterback club, it does have a plan that's in their, kind of their extended plan that they will, and they may wanna be working to, I think their plan is to help contribute towards something like that.
So, something I'd like to bring up here because it was brought up, I think, two meetings ago, when, when the Booster Club brought to us and sought our approval for fundraising to add the digital display board at the facility, probably need to circle back around with them and just look at, verify where that install's gonna be, because, you know, we're talking about a, a facility, football facility's coming up on forty years, you know, here thirty, thirty-five years, at some point, you know, the facility, like anything else, will have to be addressed, you're talking about exploring the co-, the, the cost of moving bleachers back, if it gets in that facility with eight lanes for, for track, you get a lot of things moving around there, you don't wanna have to move a board if you think at some point you could, it might be easier to, to think about positioning that now, just make sure it doesn't interfere with any future expansion, not saying that's, you know, that's in the plan, but it might be something that, rather than have to move a hundred and fifty thousand dollar video board, you might wanna think about where you're gonna position that now, just in case, 'cause I don't think on a video board, I don't think it would matter where, where it started out at, but you probably wanna put it there and, and keep it there.
So I, I spoke with Mr. Spartman at the funeral home the other night and asked him how that project was going, and he gave me an idea that they have, the installer has been here, looked at it and coming in the next couple of weeks to kind of start prepping the ground to get, to get that onboard and get that headed in that direction.
So it just might not be a bad idea to lay out that, that facility and just look, you know, just, just in case, not gonna hurt to look now, might save you some headache in the future.
Well, a couple comments, first one on the turf right there, I think there's more negatives to it than a lot of people realize and probably outweigh the positives, although it's pretty, Mr. D on, on the future maintenance partnership, concerning innovative school grant fund and the equipment that the FFA program's gonna be receiving, has there been any discussion where they're gonna park that and if there's gonna be any additions that needs to be made or, or improvements or?
It's my understanding that they have locations for that, there's a garage at the middle school where I think some of that equipment's gonna go and then at the, at the barn, and I know they store a lot of equipment under, in a fenced area, under the bleachers at the football field, so it's my understanding that they have places for that equipment, but I've not heard of any need, that they brought to me about extra facilities for those, but, but I understand, I fully understand the need to make sure that equipment is locked up and stored properly, so. Yeah, thank you.
Well, and out of the weather, I mean, that equipment is, you know, those tractors and those bush hogs, that stuff, it needs to be in a covered area where it's not being rained on all the time and, you know, it's pretty, pretty important.
We do have space at the, at the bus garage for some of that, but we did lose a facility, I think in a windstorm, we had a, a carport that got torn down, that we'd already rebuilt once, so, but anyway, but yeah, we, we understand the need there, we'll be certainly making sure that equipment is taken care of. So that brings us to page fourteen, top of the page, we're just finishing out regular Capital Outlay, so eight hundred and forty-four thousand dollars is in our Capital Outlay budget for improvements, our total education allocation then is eleven million, one hundred sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars, so the total budget, proposed budget is thirty-eight million, three hundred and thirty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars, that's a deficit budget of one million, eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and six, one million, eight hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars. That is a, our estimated fund balance or the amount in our savings right now is close to thirteen million, estimated, could be a little more than that, depending on, talking to Mr. Markham about where we are right now, but as I said, this year we will contribute one, between one and one point five million dollars back to savings and guess the note on this particular budget is we've been, you know, granted some TISA funding, which is exciting, it's allowing us to add some positions that our schools are asking for, it's allowing us to add some, some new positions and to, and certainly provide raises to our faculty and staff that they've been asking for and they deserve, but it also, we're also picking up a lot of salaries and expenses that were being paid for the past few years with grants and other sources of funding, so. That is my explanation of our general purpose school fund budget, I'm going to be glad to answer any more questions.
Yeah, I mean, just, just going through, especially with looking at, you know, salary increases and, you know, definitely looking at the schedules for each ones, I mean, each, each position, it's, it's great to see, definitely with the new funding, but yeah, I'll just go back to my first point and I know that'll be provided later, but it'd be great to see how that translates into what the teacher's salary was before, but yeah, looks, looks really promising for the, for the, for the way things were, like we talked about some director, some, you know, some of the staff was actually underpaid for a few years, so it looks like a big jump, but we've just kinda been waiting that out, 'cause we, we said in several, several meetings or several beginning of the year meetings, you know, just wait till next year, wait till next year, which I made the comment, y'all sound like they're gonna see ball fans, it's up there, sorry about that, but.
We'll go around, excuse me, I think it'd be good, we just go around the table, everybody give, if there's any comments or questions, give everybody a chance to, to, you know, to ask something now, again, as, as mentioned, this is information for us to take home as we prepare for, for deliberation and, and action next week, but thank you for starting that out, Mr. Hickey. Mr. McDonald, you have any comments you'd like to make regarding our general purpose fund?
I, I think nothing, nothing further than I've mentioned previous and some of the questions that I've had, thank you for elaborating on those, or Mr. Lee, or Dr. Alley, Mr. Markham, thank you for your work that you guys have, have put into that, I do like, like Mr. Hickey said, the, the fact that our teachers are seeing the fruits of their labor and, and the years that they've put in and getting, getting their pay increases that we've been asking for and, and, you know, the state took a long time to get there with TISA, but I think BEP and that have lived its life and I think hopefully this will be a, a better funding model than, than BEP was, we'll see in the future, see what happens, but it's, it's good to see that we were able to increase our substitute pay, I do think that that was a, a big win on my part just for the calls that I have received over the years of people who said they, they'd sub, but, you know, they can make more money other places and, and I, I think that's a, a good step forward for us on those and, and our educational assistance, I think that those folks guys, I mean, those guys and guys need need more money as well and I'd like to, I'm, I'm excited about what I see on the sports staff side with those, those leagues as well getting that data.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. McDonald, Ms. Hayston, anything, comments you'd like to make?
I'd like to, I'll piggyback on Adam, I'm really even glad that we finally put the teachers a little bit where they, they deserved it, I feel like, you know, not just this one, but other ones, kick the can down the road and kick the can, and every time we were going through there and I was seeing those increases, I was a little hard excited, excited, but sometimes it's been that little extra, you know, when you're, you keep working for the same amount and you don't, you don't want to get anything out of it, and you finally get something like this, when you finally get something, you know, it's. But, so I'll piggyback on what Adam said, I'm glad he finally got something in, in the works for all the teachers and, and, you know, I, I always appreciate Chad, they work really hard and Miss Alley and think through what you do, I know that, and I was sitting here during the screening, every time he would say something, I'd just snap it right on, it's right on top of things and we appreciate it back.
Thank you, Ms. Hayston. Miss Stone, anything you'd like to, comments you'd like to make?
I'm new to this, I'm gonna have to really study these numbers and look at it closer before I can make much of a comment.
Oh, that's, that's perfectly understandable, and again, Mr. D, Mr. Markham, Miss Alley, I'm sure they'll all be available to answer questions that you may have. Mr. Howard?
Mr. Chairman, there's a lot of good things in here and a lot of good questions that I still have, and I know there's been a lot of hard work gone into this throughout our year. My desire too is still to see board member, our board to have input into this along the year, and so just right there at the last minute, you know, we don't know really any reason to disagree. with any of these numbers right here, or even questions, so uh. I guess what I'm trying to say is, I I'm grateful, and I still have questions. Uh, I'm grateful for all this hard work, grateful for the numbers right there that I see, grateful for things I do understand, but I still would like to see a budget, a a monthly budget meeting to start to try to understand and digest some of why these numbers come together the way they do. And so uh. I don't know everything else to say, so. Who who actually puts this together? I know it's a yearly process, but are are we looking at, and Miss Ally, Chad Markham, and and your input? What about, or does the chairman, does the house have input in on the budget or not?
Chairman's just, input's just platters, uh, you know, we come to our meeting here and uh and and have have discussions uh as a board, so that's really where, you know, it's pulled up to us, and so chairman, board member, and we're all all the same on that.
And I mean no disrespect for anyone sitting at this table right here whatsoever about the work they put into this, to this budget right here. But that's a whole lot of money, and we as elected officials are the only ones in the county. And we're the ones that sign yes on this right here, or no. So uh, that's my sincere desire, hopefully in the next coming year that we'll start having some uh budget meetings where we will delve and dive into the nuts and bolts of why these numbers come together like they do today. That's all.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mr. Howard. Um, yeah, my comments and I'll just, you know, speak to that, uh, a couple of things I just just heard of. Um, it it is a significant budget, and that is because we have a significant sized district. And like with anything else, um, you know, it, there there are costs that are inherent to the services that we're providing, and it takes uh, it takes a a big effort to uh to go and pull these numbers together. Uh, I would echo, I appreciate the work, uh, Miss Ally, uh, Mr. Markham, Mr. Strombar has put together on this, and I know that you have input from uh from administrators, uh principals on down uh to pull these costs together. Um, you know, for clarification, um, you know, we uh we approved this budget, it's then it's not final approved till it comes to the uh the county commission, and as our our funding body, they have uh they have uh have input on that as well, and obviously they put a lot of trust in us in in bringing that together. Um, but uh, you know, historically, in in my tenure here, uh serving on the board, um, and we we, you know, we we budget for uh, we we try to make sure we we identify all the expenses that we can, and uh that's again reflected in the way it's been presented to us tonight, uh trying to identify our our revenues, uh underestimated revenues. Uh, my numbers and my calculations is saying that we're uh basically, we're about uh, uh our our revenues and our expenses are off about five percent, uh meaning that we're about five percent short on, roughly on revenues compared to budgets that that's been presented. Um, again, some of these uh, you know, there'll be other other monies, federal monies that I think will come in uh throughout the year that will help. We can't budget now, uh we're just budgeting the state portion of that, so I think we'll uh we'll see some of those costs being covered. At the end of the, at the end of the day, historically, we've uh we've put more money back than what we've actually spent at the end of the year, that's been very typical of our 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 district, and so obviously the uh the financial stewardship of these public funds are, it has been taken seriously, so I appreciate that on that. Um, it it is, it uh encouraging to see that uh that we have, we do have a pay scale in place for uh for for certified administrators and also support staff. That way uh we reward longevity, uh and uh I think that again is just understanding how disruptive uh turnover is in a given organization, uh that speaks well to us, and so we certainly want to uh, you certainly want to have a a mechanism like that in place, because uh personally, I do see that as a selling point if anybody was wanting to come in and and join our our district. So um, that's just a few comments that I have on that. So uh, at this time, we've covered our general purpose uh fund. We will need to uh go over our uh our uh school nutrition budget, um our cafeteria budget, but uh we've been at this for two hours, so at this time, I'm gonna uh call recess on that, so we can.
Can I ask one question before you go to recess, sir?
Yes, yes, Mr. Yes, Mr. McDonald.
So this pay scale that was put together in this salary schedule, where do we uh rank amongst the upper Cumberland schools with start out salary?
So it's it's hard to, I guess, better say, yeah. Thank you. It's it's difficult to say right now, but uh we're we rank very well. Um, you know, it's it's been my desire and this process in talking to Miss Ally and with uh Mr. Markham that, you know, it may not be possible for us to be number one in the upper Cumberland, but I don't see why we can't be in the top five. And um so I think that we're there right now, based on what I'm hearing. I've talked with other directors and shared where their starting salaries are, um and then, you know, I I it's hard, every scale is different, every district is different in how they do it, but based on starting salary, I think we're very good. And then there are a couple that are a little bit ahead of us, um but um it's not so much that I think that it would be worth the drive necessarily to to leave. Um, I can tell you that um I think we've, I think we have an excellent school system, I say it all the time, and um it's referenced by the fact that we've had so many people, we filled our our jobs quickly, and we have no certified openings right now, knock on wood, and where other people still have a lot of folks they're looking for. So I said that that speaks well for our school system, that we don't have a lot of people leaving, and um so to give it a rank, I think we're in that top five region, um there are some outliers. Um, I talked to a district today that said, you know, they're they're well ahead of us, um but then they also said, I don't know how we're gonna pay it in the next couple of years, because they dipped into their fund balance, they have no savings. So we'll name any names, but we don't want to be there, so um, you know, we've tried to be fiscally responsible. We do run what we call kind of a deficit budget, but at the same time, we, at the end, uh it tends, usually it's been a wash over the past of my tenure, and we've been able to put money back and and grow our savings account. So I think that we're, I think we're in that top five right now, based on what I'm hearing, um and that's where I want to be. You know, we just don't have, you know, White County doesn't necessarily have the fiscal capacity of a White Ca- of a Putnam County or a Cumberland County, uh but we can still compete, and so that's what I I intend to do as we move forward. And we have a good group of directors, we talk to each other quite a bit, and uh I want to be respectful. I want to compete with Putnam County, but I don't want to leave another county behind uh nearby that so that we're not, you know, hurting those around us, trying to be good neighbors as we work together. So to answer your question, I'm sorry, that's a long answer, but I think we're in the top five, and that's my intention.
Ms. Stone?
Uh, I I'm not one of these numbers, but could you roughly tell me how much uh percentage of increase that is for the teachers as well as the support staff?
Well, it's it's gonna be difficult to really put a percentage on it, because we we made a scale and allowed people to fall on that scale. So where some people saw a large raise, because they haven't seen a raise for a long time because of their longevity, theirs is going to be larger than those that have just been here one or two years, uh but they're gonna fall on that on that scale respectively. So some people did that, some some districts did just a five percent, everybody got five percent. Uh, we didn't do that, we felt like we needed to get on a scale, and that's why we totally revamped our scale. So I think it's fair in the sense that it's gonna pay honor to those people that have been here and have put in that time, so they may see a bit, a little bit larger raise than those that that just get a five percent raise, they're just because they're here. So um so it's really difficult to really put that on, it's not the way that we set our system up, uh but we think it's gonna be fair that everybody now is on a system, and they they know where they fall, and they know where they're going.
Thank you.
All right, uh appreciate those comments, so uh when we come back from recess, we'll uh go into the uh the cafeteria budget. We'll take five minutes recess, okay? Thank you. Thank you. Okay, this time I shall call our, our board meeting back to order. We'll proceed now into the central cafeteria budget fund 143. Just for, for note, and thank, thank you, Ms. Alley. She's provided you with the, the pay scale salary for prior years that was used in fiscal year 2022, 2023. And so that information's being provided to you. So you can go compare that to what's been, what's presented to you tonight.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, if I could just say one word about that. The reason you have two pay scales, there was some money given back in 2013 in which there was, it was trying to attract new teachers. And so there was an influx of money that was given to put on the beginning of a pay scale to try and attract, attract teachers to the profession. And so that's why we were running two, two scales, because it was the people that were hired prior to that. So in this process of creating this new system, we've eliminated that two track system. So just wanted you to understand why you had two different pay scales before that, because there were, it was, but again, it paid homage to people on the front end. And this system now is going to acknowledge those people that haven't been paid and get on the back end. Thank you.
That's reflected in the headers of the information you provided, so thank you for that. All right, so my understanding, Mr. Markham is going to be presenting to us our central, our central cafeteria budget fund 143. Mr. Markham?
Thank you, Mr. Young. Central Cafeteria Fund is on two pages. The first page that you have under the cover sheet are the revenues for the fund just in total for the proposed fiscal year 20, excuse me, that should say 2022, 2020, 23, 24, I'll jump up that. So the one on the far right column is the one that we're looking at. We're looking at $3,179,000 in estimated revenues for next year. 2.8, almost 2.9 million of that comes from the federal government. Next year, we still will be participating in the free lunches for, free lunch and breakfast for the elementary and middle schools. The high school is, is on a paid, so on payment plan. One thing of that note is this will be the second year of the price increases that we approved last year. We stagger that out over two years. And so this coming school year will be the final enactment of that. Lunch payments for children, we are estimating at $90,000. Again, that's coming from the high school adults, 45. Income from breakfast around 35, and then all the cart sales at 70,000. So that's $240,000 in local revenues that we receive with the sales of meals. The next section is other local revenues. We've had, we are projecting a rather large increase there in comparison to that, those funds, we're estimating $50,000 investment income for next year. The school nutrition fund, any revenue, any interest that is earned on that fund goes to that fund because of the federal dollars involved. So you'll see that for central cafeteria fund investment income. Of course, interest rates are doing well right now and that's always subject to change. Commodity rebates, miscellaneous refunds, just some minor items there that we have some small budgets for. And state of Tennessee contributes $22,000 is a payment to school nutrition programs each year. And then again, the $2.8 million from the federal government, the USDA. Majority of that's through the school lunch program and then the school breakfast program, because we're working out there. Any questions on the revenues?
Chair, Mr. Markham, why don't we pay anyone on the high school?
It's based on CEP and so it's based on data for free and reduced lunches and titles. There's some formulas that the federal government makes you use and it would not allow us to, to do that for the high school. So the high school is still like paid, they still pay, whereas the middle school and elementary schools are reduced, are non-reduced.
Well, it seems like our students would learn better if they're not hungry. And I would think this might be a hardship on some of the families, because they, they're the ones that really eat.
Yeah, well, and, and we still offer the free and the reduced and then the full pay kind of, it's, it's, the high school operates like, like we used to before CEP where you're, you have free people, they eat free, people they reduce rate and people they eat at a paid rate. So it was just the way, adding the high school into that mix, the student population would have reduced the amount that we would have gotten from the CEP and it wouldn't have made it feasible for us to do CEP at all. So they allowed us to pull out schools.
Thank you.
The second page is expenditures, just some items of note. The first several sections are the salaries and benefits. Line item 105 is Tanya Savage, the school nutrition director. And then clerical personnel is Donna Griffin. And then our cafeteria personnel, which would be all your managers, assistant managers and other cafeteria workers that work at all of the schools. Line item 168 is your temporary personnel. So those are folks that whenever we have to have a sub for a cafeteria worker, they will come in and, and be paid out of that position, whether it's through that line item. Falling below that is your benefits associated with those salaries, social security, state retirement, life insurance, medical insurance, unemployment and employer Medicare. Starting at line 307, that's where we get into our non-payroll related expenditures. Communication, that's for phone lines in the cafeterias. Just some other items down through here. Line item 334, maintenance agreements, that's our yearly payment for our point of sale service that we get through local government. So that's our software that we use to process all the, all those payments and keep track of students' lunch balances and stuff like that. Line item 336, we did increase $25,000 for this year up to 100,000. That's maintenance and repair services of equipment. So that allows us to have items fixed from outside sources. Whenever something breaks, an oven breaks, freezer goes down, those items and some maintenance related items just from that whole upkeep where those are paid out of that. Going on down to line item 355, travel, that has increased a little bit. And this year, Tanya will be taking, she received a grant that was going to allow her to take her assistant managers along with her normal managers to the school nutrition conference. And she's hoping to do that again next year, so that's why the travel line has increased. Falling on down to food supplies, line item 422, we increased that $50,000, the price of, as everyone knows, the price of food and, and items like that are going up. We are part, we do bid that out as part of a, as part of a large buying group in the upper Cumberland. But still prices are, are increasing on, on those food items. And the other items that I specifically wanted to point out are the two bottom ones, line item 709, data processing equipment, that's an increase of $10,000 to $15,000. We're looking at purchasing new computers for the managers at the individual schools. And then also on 710, food service equipment, $72,000, we're maintaining that for the year, but our plans for that are a new washer and dryer for the middle school, some new shelving at Northfield, an oven and an ice machine for White County High School.
Mr. Markham, one, couple of things here. On the subs, the temporary personnel, I know that's a pretty significant jump. Did we increase the pay for those subs as well, like we did for the teacher subs?
Yes, yes, so substitute pay will, is going up for those, those positions.
What was it in the past?
It was like $9 and I think it's going to go to $11.
So they, they are paid hourly, they're not, it's not a per day, it's just?
No, it's a per hour thing, yeah. Yeah, the way school cafeteria works, there's some people that work five hours a day, some that work six, some that work seven, and, and not everybody works a full eight hour shift or something like that, that's kind of, as they need them.
Okay, second thing, just talking about the, the 1.25, $1,250,000 for the food preparation supplies, did you buy involved, the county buys involved? Does that include all the food for summer school? Everything that's, that's used in the summer reading program, the summer program?
So we do receive some funds from the, through the summer school program budget, but for like the normal summer program, the summer feeding program, where like you get the food at the library and stuff like that, yeah, that would come out of that food supplies line.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any, thank you, Mr. Markham. Any other questions for Mr. Markham regarding our, our cafeteria fund for, for next year? Just, and again, Mr. Markham, correct me if I'm wrong, but as far as local revenues on that, on that budget, the majority of the, of the revenues are coming from the, from the, from federal government. 10% approximately is coming from local monies, that would be from revenues from our, from our customers, revenues from, from the county, revenues from the state. So you can see that the big, big portion, the, the majority of our, of our school nutrition funds is coming from federal funds. And just thought we might want to make sure that we understand that as far as where the, where those, where we get the funds to support that. All right, so go around, Mr. Higgy, you have anything, any final questions, thoughts on school nutrition budget?
Good.
Mr. McDonald?
No further questions.
Ms. Hastings? Ms. Stone?
No, I wish, no, but I wish there would be a way that we could make it more affordable for the high school by maybe lowering some of the prices.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to get my mind wrapped around, why are there's two lines here, one says budgeted and proposed? What's the mindset behind that?
So the proposed budget number, that should say 2023, 24, so that's my typo there, that shouldn't say 22, 23. The second column there is the actual budget, the current year budget for school nutrition, that's my fault.
And the third data point is what we did two years ago.
Two years ago, correct, yes.
So, so yeah, you've got?
That's my typo, I apologize.
We'll, we'll overlook that tonight.
Thank you. I put your cannon term there, I just.
All right, well, again, I'll say thank you, Mr. Markham and Ms. Savage, I know how to, in, in, had a part in putting that together as well, so appreciate you doing that. Okay, board members, so where we, where we go from here? We have our general purpose fund, we have our cafeteria fund. We've, we have that information for us to review. We will be coming together on Thursday, June 1st, at 6 o'clock here at the, at Board of Education. And we will, at that point, vote on the 2023, 2024 school budget that is, that has been presented tonight. Understand that from staff, I know that there was one correction that needed to be made on, on a salary. So if there's, we, we would request that any information that, as, as much as feasibly possible, get those corrections made and submitted to the board members. So I want to make sure that you guys have current, you're looking at current information before you come next Thursday to, to vote on our, on our budget. So we appreciate your, your help and cooperation on that. So with that, that includes our, that includes our, our budget meeting tonight. Again, just as an announcement and a reminder that our next regular scheduled school board meeting is going to be June 15th, 6 o'clock here at the BOE. So just, that's, that schedule was changed last, last meeting, so we just want to make sure that that's on everybody's radar. I'm so sorry, thank you. Was there any question besides, my, my salary was corrected on, on the new one, correct?
Right.
Was there any other question on the salary other than we'd mentioned on yours, which I think is correct? So was there any other salary that was in question other than?
I think salary was the only one.
Okay, and they're all correct, I think, for what you have in front of you on the proposed budget is correct.
Everything's correct.
Yes, except that one.
Yes.
Correct.
Well, all, all of them, I think are. Yeah, Ms. Alley's is correct, mine is correct in the new budget. I went back.
No, I think hers was.
I have not corrected my salary.
Yes. Oh, okay, yeah, okay.
Yeah, we, we had, we had, we had a discussion of that.
Okay, yes, I apologize.
It's correct on the scale, just not in the budget.
Right.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
And we can leave it like that, it's not.
Okay, I apologize, we will get that one corrected to you. I will make, when we get that, I'll make a note, tell you, send an email to everybody on that, I'm sorry, Chairman, thank you.
Not, not a problem. And, you know, and to the point, you know, we, we're, we will be discussing and debating the school budget on Tuesday. So if any board members have any ideas or thoughts, that'll be the time that we deliberate on, on that. But again, reminder of our, our meeting that's going to be on, regular meeting on June 15th, 6 o'clock here at the BOE. So at this time, I will.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to, did you say Tuesday?
Thursday, I'm sorry.
Okay. I, I want to say, and I just heard Ms. Alley say this, 42 years of service to White County schools.
Oh, that's just, it's a book.
Oh, as a bookkeeper, I'm sorry. As a bookkeeper, so what is the total number? 52 years of service to White County schools. Wow. Wow, that's impressive, so. Thank you, Ms. Alley.
Maybe we should put the sour in the same.
That, that's, that's it, that's what we want in this district, we want longevity. And that's, you know, the salary scale, supporting longevity, so thank you, Ms. Alley, we appreciate that. All right, Mr. McDonald, this time I would like to entertain a motion for Chairman.
I'll make that motion.
All right, thank you, Mr. McDonald has, has made a motion. I have a second, I have a second, Ms. Hastings. All those in favor? All right, you guys have a good evening.